Good afternoon. Welcome to Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce Candidate Forum for the Allegheny County Board of Education Candidates for the 2018 gubernatorial primary election on June 26, 2018. I'm Stu Zapsky, Executive Director of the Chamber. There are 10 active candidates running for the Board of Education, eight of which will advance to the general election in November, ultimately for four open seats on the Board. With us today are Ray Al Davis, Bob Farrell, Wayne Foot, Deborah Frank, Nicholas Hadley, and Jim Snake Robertson. For the benefit of those viewing or listening to this forum, all candidates will be given the same question and have the same amount of time to answer each question. You will be given notification as time expires. Additionally, we will alternate which candidate answers first. The questions were formulated by the Chamber's Legislative Committee with input from the membership. We solicit membership for their points of view, and then we formulate the questions there. With all that said, let's get started. Question number one goes to Ray Al to go first. Question number one: Tell us about yourself, why you are running for the Board of Education, and your qualifications.
Hello, my name is Ray Al Davis. I have lived in Allegheny County my entire life. I've been married 20 years to my wonderful husband, George, and we have three children, Max, Savannah, and Gwen, all students of the Allegheny County Public School System. I myself work as a counselor at the Cumberland Treatment Center, and I have a master's degree in marriage and family therapy. I am running for the Board of Education because I am acutely aware of the impact the opioid crisis has had on our community, and I know that it is definitely impacting our schools, and I hope to serve as a voice for that issue when policy decisions are made and as they need to change to help address the major impact that it has had on our community.
Thank you, Ray Al. Bob?
My name is Bob Farrell. I'm running for the Board because I want to finish the job that my wife, Laurel, started. As you know, she died November 8th from metastatic breast cancer. She started, she was very passionate about working with the students, the employees of the school system and the community. She was a supervisor of the Health and Family Life Program for many years, and I also worked for the Board. I'm a retired Maryland State Trooper. I was 28 years. She and I always worked together. I was five years on the Maryland State Police helicopter. I would fly the patients in, and she would meet me on the helipad. And, you know, we always did everything together. We were not just husband and wife, we were best friends. And I would like to finish what she started, and I'm very passionate about making the schools safe and making the employees feel better. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Wayne?
Yes, my name is Wayne Foot. Born and raised in Lonaconing, graduated from Crossburg, was the first of four to graduate with an art degree. I started my teaching career down in Prince George's County, but you can take the boy from the mountains, but you can't take the mountains from the boy. I came back and was lucky to get a teaching position at Valley High School, my home high school. Also, I had lettered in three sports. I took over the soccer program after John Myers retired, and I was there up until 1974. And Mr. Mandell, my supervisor, asked me to take a voluntary transfer to Fort Hill. 1974, I started there. I retired 2005, after 42 years in education. I also have 10 years' experience teaching at the college level. I've been a coach. I've been on Mid-Atlantic Advisory Councils for accreditation for schools. I've had over 75 interns. I was art supervisor for two years. I'm married. Paulette and I have three great kids, Pamela, Lepley, Todd Foot, and Shayna Leonie. We have six grandchildren. I am very passionate about education. I'm passionate about the kids. I went back to substitute. The change that I saw in four years was devastating. That's the reason why I ran for the School Board, and I'm finishing my first term with three and a half years under my belt. I am an advocate for the teachers. I worked in the trenches. I know their problems. Thank you. The red card's up. Pass it on.
Thank you, Wayne. Deb?
Hi, I'm Deb Frank. I'm the Program Director and Assistant Professor at Allegheny College of Maryland in the Hospitality Management Curricula. I made the decision to run for the Board for several reasons. As a career educator, I can empathize with the teachers. I can relate to the students. I am an administrator also, so I can see things from that perspective, and made the decision to run to try to make a positive impact. In addition, both of my children have gone through the Allegheny County Public School System, and they are thriving. They took advantage of opportunities that I think too few students take advantage of. So that was another point about why I wanted to run, to try to encourage parents, children, getting involved in all that our school system has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Nick?
Hi, my name's Nicholas Hadley. I'm a lifelong resident of Allegheny County. I live in Lonaconing right now and lived there all 38 years of my life. I live there with my wife and little boy that's a little over 20 months old. He's the pride and joy, and that's one of the main reasons that I wanted to make sure that I was on this School Board, because it doesn't hit home until it's actually your little guy that you're looking out for. So I wanted to make this system the best it possibly could be. I served four years, and then I was off for a year, and I got reappointed by the Governor. I like to think that I'm the Governor's choice. I look to be the person that's there with the experience, the knowledge to help things go through, and there's a lot of things that are going on, like redistricting, that's going to take some major knowledge on, and there's also some things, they're just coming up with the budgets that are going to be crunching, that we need some experience on, and I just think that I can bring that to the School Board. I've already been there, done that, and I just want to enhance that and just move forward and make this the best school system that we possibly can, not only for the students, but we have to advocate for our teachers as well, because they are very, very important. Also, school safety, major issue, and we've already started some of those things, and I'd like to see those finished. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick. Snake?
My name is Jim Snake Robertson. The reason I'm running for, I've been associated with the kids in the Board of Education for the past 18 years. In 2000, we started apprenticeships at the Center for Career and Technical Education, which has grown astronomically in the past years. Also sit on the Education Committee for the Chamber of Commerce, sit on the Board of Directors for the Museum on Education. In today's world, the kids need to be aware, and without awareness is what comes from us people in construction, management, education, and Chamber, to give them the opportunities to perform over and above what can be taught sometimes in the classroom. The visitation on people coming into the school to give them a lifetime viewpoint on what work is, what ethics is, and what soft skills is, is very, very important, and I think I could help greatly with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Snake. Second question goes to Bob first. Budgets and sufficient revenue are a continued concern. What long-term solution would you recommend to address revenues, and what expense items should be reviewed for possible reduction?
I think that that is a very, very good question, Stu. The budget and the access of money with the county government has been very, very, to me stagnant right now because of the adverse relationship between the Allegheny County Board of Education and the county commissioners. To me, you don't bite the hand that feeds you, and I think that they have put the county commissioners, they've removed them from being a part of the school system by removing their ex officio member from the Board. I think if you're willing, you need to be able to learn to work with people. You need to communicate with people. I learned when I was in the State Police and when I was trained by FEMA in disaster stuff, that you have to learn all the players that you're going to work with, be that the town mayors, the police chiefs, the fire chiefs, whoever it is. I don't think the Board is any different than that. I think they need to go over and work with the county commissioners. They need to be on a first-name basis. I think they need to meet monthly, maybe even right now weekly, to try to get theirself back on good financial footing. There's a lot of deficits that I see and questions that I have. For example, there now has been a big push to revitalize the Greenway Stadium, and there now, and I applaud the folks that are working to try to find that money, but my question is, where, 10 years ago, they added a dollar to each ticket, adult ticket, for people coming to the stadium. Where's that money? What's being done with it? Has it been used over the time, or is it sitting in a fund? And to my understanding, it has been about $20,000 each year from Fort Hill and about $15,000, give or take a little bit, from Allegheny. That totals out to be about $300,000 over 10 years.
Thank you, Bob.
So...
Thank you. Wayne?
Money is always a problem. We are not a Prince George's County. We are not a Montgomery County. With me coming onto the School Board this past term and still serving, I thought, being friends with all the people that were commissioners, that the bridge could be gapped. But we have a Hatfield and McCoy situation between the School Board and with the commissioners. As long as you have that, you're not going to have teamwork. Why have we always been funded under the maintenance of effort over the last three or four years? If people can't get along, and if people cannot communicate, you can't be a winning team. One thing that upset me a little bit was with our Board meetings. Now we've gone to what they call Board Docs, expense a program. Everyone has a laptop in front of them. No longer do you get the agenda put in your mailbox at your home. It's things like this that keeps draining and draining and draining the money source so that we cannot emphasize on salaries for teachers, or for the custodians, or for the cooks, or for the maintenance people. There is just something, a matter, with how we do business, and probably if some of us ran our homes the way things have been run over the last couple of years, we probably would be going into foreclosure or something like that. There has to be communication. There has to be transparency with the people. After all, they're going to elect us, so we're elected by the people, for the people, and they need to be addressed with what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Deb?
School funding's an issue nationwide, as everyone knows. Our Allegheny County Public School System has an annual budget of around $118 million, 70% of which is funded by the state, the other 30% from the county. Recognizing that the county also has budgetary constraints, I don't necessarily fault the county commissioners or the county government for making funding decisions, as in maintenance of effort, which is required by law, that they at least fund what they funded the prior year. I understand this year the county commissioners have agreed to go a little more than that because the enrollment has dropped, but they chose not to reduce the funding, so I do appreciate that. I think in this day and age, schools have to start looking for alternative funds. I would support at least one full-time grant writer, if not two, in the Board Office to focus exclusively on securing funds that might not have been obtained before, particularly for teaching resources. I think we need to look at every avenue other than just relying on the consistent funding by the state and county government. As I said, it's a sizable budget, and when the state is saying that they are limited and the county is saying they are limited, that's the perfect time, in my eyes, to start looking at alternative sources like grant writing. Thank you.
Thanks, Deb. Nick?
Well, the budget process is something that begins from the time you're in there till the time you're out of office. It's nonstop, and it seems like you're constantly worried about it, and where's the money going to come for this project? Where's it going to come from that project? You know, I do want to applaud the county commissioners for allowing it to be a flat funding this year as opposed to maintenance of effort. It's very difficult and discouraging when you walk up to the door and say, "These are our needs. This is what we have to have to run this school system," and we get knocked down $1, $2, $3 million. It's tough. I also agree with Mrs. Frank here, where it's tough for the county commissioners and the state as well, but, you know, we do need to have that relationship. We need to keep forging forward, and if it comes to grant writing, I'm okay with that. If it comes to looking at all of the programs that we have, not necessarily to cut those because they're very important, but just check and see maybe a closer tab on what we're actually doing and what we're giving to the students, and is it worthwhile? Are they getting the best bang for their buck, so to speak? And, you know, it's not an easy process, but it's something that I believe that we've worked on over the last few years, and I just do thank the county commissioners again for that little flat funding extra. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Nick. Snake?
Funding is a source of revenue to complete a Pacific-type of job. If you considered my own checkbook as that of the county commissioners, I can only write a check out for what's in there. I cannot overexpress the importance of the income as well as the output of this money to the system. A few days ago, I noticed in a paper there was three and a half pages of taxes not paid in the county that I happened to look at, and I was surprised that if that all would have been paid by now, how much substantial money that would have been going to the county just in taxes. So I think cooperation, I think it's good to communicate with people, but I understand that you can only put forth what you have in the investment. I can't second-guess them this year for what they did last year. I think that the main thing is, is to be able to talk, have security reasons on why you're saying what you're saying, and be able to prove to them beyond the shadow of doubt that you can meet what we give you. The other thing that I'm more concerned about too with that is, is the idea for salaries, pensions, health benefits. To me, that all has to go under collective bargaining agreement, which is a thing that is done between the teachers, the people in the cooking, the everything else. That's under collective bargaining agreement. That needs to go to that to be settled on wages and increases. And if it can't be settled between that commonly, then it needs to go to the NORB, which they'll settle it for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Snake. Ray Al?
When it comes to matters of budget and money, emotions almost always run high. The line between needs and wants gets blurred, and tempers can start flaring. In my experience, I was a, I know Allegheny County as a whole, we're not a high-income area, and I am not a high-income recipient. I raised three children with my husband. Started out really young, teenage mom, no money, used to making some very difficult decisions. And with my training in marriage and family therapy, a lot of that leads, the heart of that is improved communication and collaboration and letting everybody be heard, because usually there's, if you're listening, there's a common goal, and there's going to be a way to get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray Al. Question number three starts with Wayne. The public comment and Board response policy are currently under review for public meetings. What would you suggest as a fair policy?
Well, thank you for a very difficult question. This has been something that has been talked about to me by the public. Wayne, why can't we talk back? We are trying to make some steps forward over the last couple of years. Whether it's going to work, I don't know. Our chairman come out and said it would be like hijacking the meeting, taking it over, but after all, it's the people of Allegheny County that pay the taxes that goes into making this program run. Why should they not be able to address a question and get some answers back instead of saying, "We will get back to you either with a telephone call or someone will email you something." Again, we go back to that word, communication. It's an issue. People are upset. People are intimidated to come over to our meetings on Washington Street. I would like to see the meetings go out into the high school regions where people could come out more freely, and I don't think they would be afraid to speak out in an environment like in a high school compared to our meeting room over there at the Board. It is a very hot issue, and it's going to be one that's going to have to be dealt with by me and the Board that I'm on now, what is going to be done with this, because I think it's important that the public gets a chance to talk, and I dearly think we have to be more transparent as a School Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Deb?
This is a difficult issue because I can see both sides of this. On the one hand, allowing the public constituents to freely ask questions of the Board, I applaud that, that that's what occurs in county government and city government. With some stipulations and regulations, you have to pre-sign up and so on. On the other hand, the Board, in my eyes, is to function as a single unit with five voices unified. I struggle with people wanting answers immediately from a team that I think needs to function as a team and behave and answer as a team. So on that side, I can see why waiting a week to get consensus or at least conversation among the Board members would make sense. I understand, and Mr. Hadley and Mr. Foot can correct me if I'm wrong, I understand that that was, policy was approved or with a four-to-one vote of having some public input. So with that, you know, I'll work with that, but I can see the other side and the challenge of doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Nick?
The normal process is if someone comes and speaks in the Board meeting, they actually do get a response. It's one of those things, they either get it from the supervisor or the individual that it would be addressed to or from the superintendent, so it's not like they're sitting there not getting an answer. However, I 100% agree with having dialogue, not necessarily back and forth, because then you become bickering back and forth, but I believe that if it is something quick and easy that you can answer, I think that is what this policy has actually given us. It's given us a chance to say, "Hey, this is what the answer is," and then it puts that issue to bed. I was one of those that voted, and I think at this point, it's down to first reading only approved. I think we have to go another one, but, you know, it's the constituents of Allegheny County that put us there. So they need to be heard, and they need to hear from us, not hiding behind a piece of paper, not waiting two or three weeks to hear back, and I 100% fully agree that we need to move forward with changing that policy, and I will vote to make it so. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick. Snake?
I think when an individual comes to an organized meeting and wishes to ask the question in a gentleman's situation, that it is the responsibility of those that are being addressed to come back and give an answer to that individual. The only idea that I have, when you sit on a Board of five and the question is centered to you, at that point in time and that quick, do I actually have all the pertinent information I need immediately without conversing with the other four individuals on that panel? I think it can be done in certain circumstances. I think it has to be scrutinized to the point that you don't have 50 or 100 people coming in at night and then talk for two minutes, talk for five minutes, and, you know, it's not a good... The construction part of it, and what I say about construction, is the meat of the subject where, when you leave there, you feel comfortable, has to be prevalent at the time you ask the question, not two weeks, three weeks, or whatever later. So that's my basic outlook on that.
Thank you, Snake. Ray Al?
It was concerning to me to hear that people were feeling intimidated to speak out, and I agree that it is the constituents of the Allegheny County that put us here, and I think they have every right to be heard. I think it gets back to the same core buzzwords we've been saying already of compromise and communication. I don't consider, when I, I keep going back to my structure in the therapy setting, I'm not better than the person sitting on the other side of my desk, and I don't, I believe that it would be, to increase things, like I would like to see more parental involvement, and if people are feeling intimidated to go out and say what they would like to say to the Board, that's going to be a barrier to that, and I'm all about reducing barriers. So I love the idea of maybe relocating the meetings to have them where people would feel an increased access, along with having that structure, so things don't get too hectic. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray Al. Bob?
I think when, as most of us have said, the people of Allegheny County vote to elect people to the Board of Education, we are their representatives if we are elected, and we owe them the due diligence to have a conversation with them. If they have taken the time out of their day to come in to talk to the Board of Education about a problem that they have with the system or with their child or whatever, we owe them the courtesy to respond to them and give them some type of answer if we can. It might turn out to be a personnel action that truly they can't talk about, but you at least have to give people the common decency of a conversation, and we, and the folks on the Board are elected by them to do that, and I think that that's the least that they can expect. I can tell you that if I am elected to the Board, I will have a conversation with them, and I will talk to them, and I will find out what their problems are. We want parent involvement. We all keep saying, "We want parents to be involved, and we want the community to be involved." Let's hear what they have to say, and let's respond to what they have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Question number four goes to Deb first. No one is immune from the nationwide opioid crisis. How do you feel it should be addressed to minimize its effect on our students and the school system?
Sadly, an issue that has been increasing not only in Cumberland but nationwide. I know that in our communities, we have DARE programs at the middle school levels. I know that there's education going on at the elementary school level. I think that providing more resources to drug education at the high school level is particularly important, but I also look at the perspective of a lot of these children coming through our school system are growing up in addicted families. So it's not just trying to convince the students to stay away from drugs, it's trying to provide support and resources for them if their entire family has been impacted. I don't, I think that counselors or the availability of those kinds of resources is something that has to be addressed and put into place at every school level, and not just to rely on some episodic DARE programs and things like that. It has to be a full-on, consistent, consistently applied and well-addressed program that covers all levels in the school system, and not, and also to reach out to the resources that are already in our community. We have a lot of really powerful resources. I think a lot of those available resources aren't sure how to get involved with the school system, so I think it's the responsibility of the Board of Ed to reach out to those local resources to bridge that connection and try to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Nick?
You know, this is an issue that not only plagues the students, but it's also plaguing them through their parents as well, and there are so many kids that are not necessarily the ones that are addicted or having the problems with the opioids, but their parents, their grandparents, their whatever, they're going home and they're seeing them, possibly laying there, and it's like, it's very traumatic, not only because, you know, of the opioid itself, but because they've actually seen someone either pass away or passed out or have to be revived. You know, these are kind of some simulation things that may need to happen at the high school level, because they just recently did a car accident simulation at the high schools, and I thought that probably opened a lot of eyes. Maybe if they had a little bit more of that, real-life transaction dealing with the opioids, that might be the way to go. It's also partnering with people like the Health Department, the hospital, any other organization that deals with this. You know, the DARE program, I am a graduate of the DARE program back in early, early, early years, and, you know, it was a great program that got little kids aware of what was going on, but just like Mrs. Frank said, we need to make sure that the high schoolers know, because they're the ones that are going to start dabbling, and it's no longer just, "Hey, I'm going to go smoke some dope." It's actually going to be something that could literally kill you, and we need to make sure they understand the consequences, and they need to understand what could potentially happen to them, their family members, their friends, and we need to just corroborate with anybody that's willing to help out and give any information.
Thank you, Nick. Snake?
An example of that I'd like to give is, I come from a background of a drug-free workforce, and knowingly that the students coming in in their senior year to apply for a job, that the qualifications and the drug test that they have to take to be employable becomes a real problem. Now, how far back do we address that? You know, we can spend money for education, we can spend money to help, like on Red Hill, where they have them come in getting the subsidies for the opioids. Are we getting strict enough on those being caught delivering these drugs, possibly, into the county? Are we doing enough by actually getting to the point where it's come out in some states where they want to start drug testing seniors? Now, to me, that's kind of an influence or a thing back on somebody's private, private time, but in today's world, coming from the working aspect where we want our kids to go to work, as an employer, it's my responsibility, if... as an employer, it's my responsibility if somebody gets hurt on that job site, a student coming in or even an intern, and they are on drugs or haven't been drug tested, that is my responsibility. So we have to back up even further to, to the ninth graders, to the eighth graders and talk about it. But, but the key is, we have to become more stricter when we find people that are doing what they're not supposed to do, instead of finding a bridge or some type of effect to go by that, so that their hands are just slapped. So that's my firm and viewpoint with that.
Thank you, Snake. Rayelle?
I view the opioid epidemic as a symptom of deeper problems. And to put that in the perspective of what I would like to see, how I'd like to see that addressed within our school system is, I have interviewed thousands of people on their substance abuse history and heard their stories. It is something I consider to be an honor and a privilege, and you start to notice patterns, and it almost always invariably has, starts with some type of coping mechanism, whether it was someone who had surgery and was prescribed pills and didn't realize, hey, I actually have social anxiety, and that made that go away for me, in addition to any physical dependence and withdrawal symptoms. Programs like DARE pay lip service, in my opinion, they don't really address those issues. I would love to see more of a curriculum-based mental health wellness, self-care taught at developmentally appropriate levels from K through 12, all the way, all the way through. We struggle with sense of balance, I think, in general as human beings, and it would be great if we could help teach our kids self-regulation and less emphasis on things like, address things like, we're going to have big tests, how are we going to address test anxiety? I've done that in my experience, my limited experience teaching Psychology 101 this semester. The kids are seniors in high school, they have a lot of changes coming up. It doesn't cost anything to take some time out of class to address those issues, but it's about putting that knowledge out there. And I would like to see curriculum changes that could reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rayelle. Bob?
I'm probably the only person sitting here that has really, really dealt with the drug problem in, in the Allegheny County, because I was a police officer for 28 years and saw the effects that it did in the homes, to the families, to the community. I'm very strong on doing something about the drug program. I realized that we had, as Nick said, a program that, where we showed a, a car where it was a crash, and it was this and that. There was a study done years ago, and they found that most of the students that saw that program always believed, it's not going to happen to me. And I think that that's what happens when you do those type things. We had other programs and I, that, that do impact kids, and they do find that psychologically does affect kids. And I go back to the DARE program and, you know, I, I realize it, because I did teach in the high school level, that when you asked a, a child that was in the 11th or 12th grade, who was your DARE teacher? They can spout that off to you in a second. If you ask them who their third grade or fourth grade teacher was, they're going to have to think about it for a while. So I do think that DARE has some impact on kids. I think that the community as a whole needs to come up to a whole process of how we're going to deal with this, as far as the justice system, as far as the Board of Ed, as far as the Health Department, we all need to work together to try to make this, make this thing better for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Wayne?
It has been a problem and will continue to be a problem. I hope somehow, some way, the good Lord up above helps us through this. I took a couple of notes here. Number one, if you had a resource officer in each school, that's the eyes and the ears. They're trained to see something, something suspicious, it can be napped, helping the student in school. Another thing is guidance counselors. In my day of being in school, guidance counselor was there to talk to you about your problems. Our guidance counselors today are more involved in talking to students about getting them prepared for college. They don't have time to have the one-on-one about a problem. Next thing is teacher awareness. Teachers are so busy with all the crap that's coming down from the federal and the state government, do this, do that, do this, do that, they don't have time to be really aware, seeing something that they can report to a guidance counselor, where a guidance counselor could be calling in a student to talk about them, you have a problem, you can talk to me. We need to bridge that gap where students have a place to go to talk in school. I know as an art teacher, I probably did more counseling than a counselor. Kids felt at ease in my room. It was easy for them to come to me, Mr. Foot, can I talk to you about something? They had confidence in me. You can't tell them the right answers, but you can give them some ideas of where to go to get help. That's what we need, where to go to get help. The kids have to have a place to go to talk to someone. Again, more emphasis on the guidance department. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Next is question five, that'll go to Nick first. We'll be taking a short break at the conclusion of this question. So let's move on with five. Nick, school safety and security is also a national concern. What are your thoughts on school resource officers, other security measures? How do we pay for it? And similarly, what are your thoughts on the mental health component in our schools?
That is a great concern of, I think, everybody sitting here this evening, especially the seated school board as well. You know, my thing is that we need to have an SRO in each and every school. We can't rely on the eight that we have in the system right now, because they can't be in every, every school at every time. If we had an SRO in every school, that would allow them to at least have somebody there to see what was going on, to protect the kids, the, the staff would feel safer, and all of that wonderful stuff. But we also have to think about how are we going to pay for this? I know the governor has supported some money and put more millions of dollars out there to take care of that, but you know, I don't want that to take away from the actual educational portion to fund our security. But I also have to say, your kid's life is not something that we can put a price tag on. So my thing is, I voted for an SRO in every classroom or every school, and I would continue to push for that and work with the county commissioners, because they're our first point of contact. I also think that with all of the things that are going on, it might not be a bad idea to look at some sort of better security system. I was there several years ago whenever we installed the little buzzer at all the schools. That was a great thing for that. We also have to look at maybe some sort of security glass, because a lot of our schools have a lot of glass. So we need to look at what's most beneficial for our students and our teachers to keep them safe. But you know, this also could impact them, like you said, Stu, mentally. You know, if they're worried and confused about going to school because there might be someone busting that door, if they have that SRO standing there in the lobby or around the school, that's going to put them more at ease. So we need to look at beefing up security all the way around.
Thank you, Nick. Nick?
I agree that we need security in the schools, all the schools. The bell system and the, to announce when you're coming there is one, one small step of doing that. The, the mental aspect is, is really important to me in regards to, I think a lot of this starts on the bullying aspect in the school systems, where kids have the opportunity to push theirself around and maybe not being addressed to the point of a penalty being assessed for what they're doing that causes more and more of it to be performed. Money, we get back to it again, what, you know, money, what are we going to do? How are we going to come up with it? A suggestion would be to see, and I know this is different with some people, let's put a school tax on the referendum in Allegheny County. If it's two, three cents on the dollar or whatever, for strictly a school tax, for safety reasons, security reasons, whatever it may be, maybe that would fly. It would fly more with those people having students probably in the schools than it would with the older generation, but they, we're hoping they would be grandchildren or whatever. So you know, security is, is done by a human. I mean, we can think about the, the rifles, we can think about the, you know, whether it be a bomb or whatever it might be, you know, but it's all being handled by a human. So again, you know, we have lost probably for the past 10 or 15 years, the capability of talking to students and understanding that they do have a moral aspect to other people around them. So with that being said, I think I, I've covered that as far as I.
Thank you, Snake. Rayelle?
I really believe that the issues such as the impact of the opioid epidemic, the mental health issues, and school security can all have a linkage to an increase in access and, and increase in the amount of school counselors. They do function as more of an administrator, and you maybe have one or two for an entire school, which is, I can't imagine. And that would be another set of eyes and ears for problems if kids needed an increase in resources to the community before things fester to bigger problems. I, and, and address things like bullying. And I do support school resource officers as well and increased security measures. I would just want that balanced out against it becoming too harsh, where there just creates more and more barriers or kids, like if we're going to do, of course, we need to do lockdown drills, that's important. Is it scaring the crap out of kids and also ultimately maybe doing more harm than good? And so just a sense of balance there too. So school security while still letting the kids be kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Rayelle. Bob?
Well, Stu, you know, I, I did that job for a number of years for the Board of Education. I'm the guy that put the cameras in, I'm the guy that put the, the door lock systems in, I'm the guy that designed the, the stuff that they, they installed. The, I also was on the committee after the Connecticut shooting that was formed in Allegheny County and with all the folks that were in law enforcement to come up with a plan. The plan was to, to hire retired law enforcement officers and to build on that plan to put them in each school. The cost for that, we have eight in place, the cost for 13 more is about $390,000. If I were on the board right now, I'd have already been hiring people to, to fill those positions. I don't think one child's life is worth that kind of money that that can't be done. There are guys out there that are retired, spent 28, 30 years in law enforcement that would be glad to do that job for nine months a year. You only pay them for the hours they work. If they, you know, if they're off in the summer or whatever, they're only contractual employees, you pay no benefits, and I think $390,000 is a small price to pay. I'm sure that the board has a rainy day fund right now that's well in excess of that, and I certainly would have been willing to do, to dig into it, to, to start that. I think there's also other programs that could be put into the door lock system that gives you facial recognition of folks that aren't supposed to be in the schools. There's a lot of things that are in my head that I know that we can do, and I'd really like to get the opportunity to do that to keep our kids safe and the employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Wayne?
I'll refresh my memory on the question.
School safety and security is also a national concern. What are your thoughts on school resource officers, other security measures? How do we pay for it? And similarly, what are your thoughts on the mental health component in our schools?
Okay, I voted on this present school board for a resource officer, school resource officer to be put in each school. I think that's a step. The step with our buzzer systems coming into the schools is not 100%. I think we need to address that. But all of this takes money, and the whole thing of it is, what's more important in our county? All these extra programs that we have or the safety of our students? I have three grandchildren going to school in this county. I'm concerned about their safety. A lot of people that I talk to are concerned. One thing that I promised the people if they voted me in was that I was going to have town hall meetings. That's called communication. I've had five. I've had one over 100, I've had probably one less of 25 at a meeting. We, we need to be concerned about our children. We need to be working together with law enforcement. We need to be working as a team, coming up with the best plan that we possibly can get to protect our children, their grandchildren, my grandchildren, other Mimi's and Pappy's grandchildren's. They are our first concern, and safety is a big issue. I think our present board is now taking steps, little steps, but we are making some headway. And we need to get those extra 13 school resource officers in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Deb?
Thanks. I would support school resource officers located in every school. I, I've heard different figures than, than what Mr. Farrell quoted. To get 13 additional SROs, I've heard between one and $2 million. So the funding for that would be a challenge. I know that with Governor Hogan's allocation or, or plan to spend money on school safety assessments and making available grant money for schools that want to make some changes in their system, particularly in the area of mental health, that will go a long way to support some of this. But I'd like to echo what Rayelle said, and I think just a discussion of an SRO in a school, or having bulletproof glass, or self-closing doors, or self-locking doors, those are important. But I, I think we're not giving enough lip service to mental health counselors. Our psychological services, I think, not just in Allegheny County, I think nationwide are not effective, they're not sufficient. Almost, well, every case of a school shooting has involved somebody who has had issues for a long, long time. Our psychological services now focus on testing for learning disabilities, and, and I think our school counselors are counselors, not therapists. I think we need to really take a look at the availability of mental health therapy or counseling services, not just guidance counseling in our schools. I, I look at a school like South Penn, where the teachers are practicing mindfulness at the start of their elementary school classes. They have been able to see a marked decrease in bullying and frustration. Why are we not taking five minutes at the start of each class to spend on doing things like mindful meditation? You know, there are things that can be done at very little to no cost, and I think we need to add those to the list of things to prevent some school issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. We will now take a short break. Welcome back. Question number six first goes to Jim. Sorry, Jim. Snake? Question number six. There appears, there appears to be inconsistency of class size from school to school, especially at the elementary level. Is there a need for adjustments at the elementary level? If so, how should it be addressed?
The size of classes is depending on where the students are located at this time in the city or town that they're going to. It would be hard unless you started to transport students to different schools, which I'm sure is going to come up in the near future in regards to not having enough students, say 18 to 20 or whatever they may be in those classes. I like to see students when they're young stay close to home, but in today's world and the cost of keeping schools open, paying for this and paying for that budget cost, it's hard to keep schools open if you can't fill the classes. I think we've experienced that, not in public schools, but in the private institutions as well. So I, I would like to see that, we, we look at that with a very hard look and try to keep them, everybody wants a small class, but you know, I don't want to see teachers removed because of combining schools. There are a lot of elementary students probably that could use more of a one-on-one or a, a little more with the curriculum that they have. I know that they have to move and get things going rather quickly to do it, but I would have to look at the whole situation and have the information in front of me before I can make an honest decision on what that would be.
Thank you, Snake. Rayelle?
I would, I agree. I think we need to have, be mindful of keeping the kids that are at the elementary school age as close to home as possible for as long as that is a fiscally responsible thing to do. I also think that at that age, developmentally, that is when you're going to see a lot of problems develop with learning disabilities, certain developmental disorders, and we need to make sure that we're being mindful of student-teacher ratio so that those problems can be properly identified, because the earlier they are, the more resources that are available and the better quality of life students can have moving forward if they have those proper resources. So just being mindful of the teacher-student ratio would be something I'd be, wouldn't want to decrease that too much, especially at that elementary school level because of the developmental issues that can arise.
Thank you, Rayelle. Bob?
I am, and I've publicly said it, I am for the community schools. I will not, under any circumstances, try to close or move any community schools. I think the smaller class sizes for the elementary children are very, very important, important for their beginning development. They need the best start that they can get in a elementary school so that when they progress later on, they're progress later on, they're, they're fully developed and able to do better in, in their classes and whatever. And I think they need that basic start. I realize the financial end of it, but all of the community people pay taxes, they all are vested in their community schools. And I for one will never vote to close a, a community school to, because of financial reason. I'll try to find the money other places. And I think that some of the communities around here have been damaged and hurt enough with closings of schools. And I am not for closing or redistricting or doing any of that right now.
Thank you, Bob. Wayne?
Class size, having been there being a teacher, Victor Lowenfeldt, who was the guru of art education out of Penn State, said the ideal art class would be 18 to one or 15 to one. I'm going in, well, I saw firsthand. I went back and subbed after I completed my 42 years and I built my dream house and class sizes are gone overboard. You just cannot teach with that many people in a class. So, it comes to scheduling, it comes to money. And that seems to be the whole issue, no matter what we're talking about, is the dollar and how we're going to spend it. There's examples of, like a tech class, they have 18 computers to work with, but when the scheduling is made, teachers get back to me, I get a lot of talk back from teachers because they know I was a teacher. They put 23, 24 students in that tech class, but there's only 18 computers. How are you to teach under those conditions? Again, more computers, that's more money. Maybe more teachers, that's more money. It all hinges on this, this, this dollar. Right now, we are working as a school board to get the ratio down in the lower levels of elementary to be 18 to one because we have some very, very large classes in like the third grade, like 24, 25, 28, 29. How can a teacher begin to teach under those conditions? So, we are addressing that issue right now. And hopefully, come the next school year, we will get to that 18 to one and, and the lower grade levels in elementary. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Deb?
As a teacher for 30 years, class size, I, I've seen the impact of having classes that were way too large. And the reverse is true also, classes that were way too small. I know that on average in Allegheny County, if you look across all levels of all the schools, we're fairly close to the state average in terms of the ratio of students to teachers. I know though, that there are exceptions to that. There are some elementary schools that are crowded, there are others that have too few students. And I know that that's been the genesis of the discussion about redistrict, redistricting. So, I, I support community schools. I also though, know that this board has to be fiscally responsible. And so, some conversation has to happen or an examination has to happen about the usage of some of these schools, whether these facilities are actually being used completely and how to maybe make adjustments with that. But I, if elected, would take this matter really seriously because I, again, as a teacher, I know the impact of having a class that's too large. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Nick?
The current board recently received feedback from a study that was done, and it did come up with showing there is pretty much excess of about 300 students or something to that amount that showed that we have extra, you know, students compared to capacity. You know, this idea of redistricting is fine, and I am, I have no problem doing that, but whenever it starts veering down to the consolidation, consolidation leads to closing of schools. That can be devastating to not only the students, but that can hurt communities. You know, I grew up in, in an area that saw consolidation and schools being closed that people still aren't over it because it's devastating. It can really hurt the economical structure of the actual towns. So, whenever it comes down to redistricting, I think that it can be done more so in the city schools because there are more city schools. You can just take some from this neighborhood and put them over here. I know that sounds very, you know, elementary and small and, and small thinking, but that's probably the easiest way to move people around. You know, when you go to outlying schools, Frostburg, the George's Creek area, Westernport, there's only a few elementary schools in those areas. To say that you're going to redistrict them or to close them or consolidate them, that's hard to do because you're gonna have them on a bus for 30 minutes, 45 minutes. And for little kids, they don't need to be doing that. So, we need to really take a look at this study that came through, whoever, you know, is on the board at the time. And they really need to make sure that it's going to be the best thing for the student. Not just because, oh, we have a little extra room in this school and it needs to be closed. No, we need to make sure that it's beneficial for the students, the class size and the teachers overall. So, I, I'm okay with redistricting, but I don't like the fact that it would lead to other things. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Perfect timing. Question number seven first goes to Rayelle. We are now entering the second year of PTEC, Pathways in Technology Early College High School Program. It has proven to be very popular with the students and is other, is rather unique in that it incorporates Allegheny County Public School System and Allegheny College. How do we address funding for this program, both at the ACPS level and the Allegheny College level, as the number of cohorts increases?
Again, I'm gonna take that issue back to the importance of looking at it through the impact on students developmentally. All students have their, have their strengths and unique gifts and should be given the opportunities to seek those out. And I would like to see more collaboration with college readiness, whatever that may be, whatever, some, whether it's a tech, tech program, like vocational services, tech, whatever it is that the students would like to be able to do. There was recently an article I was reading that there was concern over students coming in there not prepared. So, just reaching out and having more collaboration between Allegheny College and the school system. And funding, again, gets back to that issue of money. And that, I, everything I've had to say no about money as I've already said. Thank you.
Thank you, Rayelle. Bob?
I kind of agree with her. It seems like everything that we talk about, it's like throw some money at it and that will fix it. And I'm not sure that that's the answer to everything, is throwing money at it and see if we could fix it. When I taught at the Career Center, I had articulated agreements with Potomac State College and with Allegheny Community College. And things worked very, very well. Some of the instructors at the college that I talked to had serious concerns about children coming out of the high schools because they had trouble with reading and writing and some other grammatical type things. And I don't think that you can fix all of those things very easily. Those things go back to the formative years. That again goes back to why I'm talking about, you know, the, the class size with the elementary class, that they nearly need a good foundation to build on to move forward. And I truly think that where we're going astray on that is we need to let teachers teach. That's what they're, that's what they went to college to learn to do, that's what their passion is. And we have very good teachers in Allegheny County. We have very good people here. And we need to let them show their ingenuity and let them work, work forward. I just don't think throwing money at it is going to make a difference. I think the, the community and, and the workforce here will do it for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Wayne?
Again, the age-old factor, money. Maybe I could get some of the art teachers and maybe we could learn a way to make money where we would have more money to spend in the county, but no, we couldn't do that. Partnership, it's very important with colleges and labor working together. I served on the Labor Advisory Council. And my eyes have been opened, what we have been able to do out at the Career Center with the efforts on the part of the school system, Allegheny College of Maryland and the Labor Council. And not every child is going to go to college. And some of the things that are coming out in these meetings that I attend, that we are providing careers for students to go out and make a decent wage. We are going down the slippery slope here in Allegheny County. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure that out. People are moving out, there's nothing to attract people. The railroad at one time was one of our big companies that hired people. Four shifts down to one. And now, one shift is possibly going down to zero. It takes money to run programs. And the whole thing of it is, if we can partnership more within all these agencies, we can develop programs. But the bottom line is money. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Deb?
The PTEC program is just one example of many successful partnerships at the secondary and post-secondary level. I know that I have written several articulation agreements with the Career Center where students can graduate from, in particular, the culinary and hospitality programs there and step into college already having earned 10 or 11 credits, which for those students who go into a certificate program is nearly half of the credit requirements. So, PTEC is like that. I think we need to look at more partnerships with higher education. That's been a big part of my platform from the beginning, that I think that we at the, at the post-secondary level don't partner enough with the secondary school level. I think we could be doing more in terms of exchanging ideas and, and teachers and faculty getting together to, to talk about not only college, college readiness like Rayelle was mentioning, but, but different pathways. Not all students need to go through traditional college, there are non-traditional routes. And I think those are becoming more popular. So, in terms of funding, when you partner a college with a, a secondary school, the, the funding question is a little easier, the funding answer is a little easier in that colleges charge tuition in addition to getting funding at the state level. So, I think that just looking at additional partnerships like PTEC would be a valuable contribution to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Nick?
Well, you know, PTEC has proven to be a fantastic thing, as you've said, Stu. There's so many people that are wanting to get into that. And it is gonna take the collaboration of the colleges, the universities, you know, different schools within the districts, you know, you might even want to expand across the state board, I don't know. But it's definitely gonna take a collaboration. Money is not free. I know the first few years, there's been major money that's come in through grants. And the students that are utilizing this program and, and taking care of this funding, they are the ones that definitely need it, you know? They're the ones that are going out to do certain projects, certain, you know, they, they need this, this funding for their actual graduation and moving into the higher level. So, I don't think there's magic money sitting out there, we've already had major conversations about that. But it is gonna take collaboration and I don't know how that's gonna work, but we need to pull as many people in as we possibly can, even if it's gonna take a sponsor from a business or an individual or however that's gonna work. But we need to work with this entire county to make it, you know, prosperous for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Snake?
Very special thank you to all those businesses and people that took a lot of time to get that PTEC program instituted here in the county. It's always nice to see when something new comes onboard that we can adjust to or try to get students interested in. Hoping in the future, as these students progress through, that the businesses that are interested in employing these people will be able to, to maybe do scholarships or sign on work for me for three or four years and I will take care of this, that, or whatever in some of these programs. With work being as, economic development being low and not many people looking for these type of individuals in this county here, only a few, we are probably training people for somebody else's jurisdiction to be successful. And that's hard to say and that's hard to really swallow because I'd like all those children to be able to graduate and work here and be profitable. But I can't say no more about money, everybody understands the money point, but there's a lot of people that have done in-kind credits, as I call it, to have these programs instituted and have gone the extra mile to make sure that the students can be on another track to be successful. And to me, that's community. Thank you.
Thank you, Snake. Question number eight goes to Bob first. This topic did come up in previous questions, however, the question itself has not yet been asked. The question is, the relationship between the Board of Education and the county commissioners in recent years has been strained at best. Where I'd like to focus on, on this, for this purpose, is however, what can be done to repair that relationship and improve cooperation? Bob?
As I said before, that, in an earlier question, that that is one of the, the things that I really think really needs repaired. The relationship between the county and the Board of Education has been just damaged immensely. And, and let me give you an example. Back a couple of years ago, the Board of Education and the county shared a computer program to do tax bills, to do salary, to do all kinds of things. And the employees for the, were employed and housed at the board, but part of their salary was paid for by the county. And they did work for the county and they did work for the board under the same auspice. The board decided to end that working relationship with the county. So, the county ended up going out and buying another computer program and hiring people to do that, the same job. And the board, again, spent the same kind of money to go buy a computer program and do the same job. And they're not working together. You have to communicate with each other, you have to talk to each other. And having the county commissioner ex officio member removed from as a member of the board to me was just not a good idea. You have to be able to sit down, know the people you're working with, maybe go out and, and, you know, have lunch with them, have dinner with them and, and become familiar with them. You don't have to be the greatest friends, but you do have to be able to communicate and relate to them and work on problems together. And that is a serious problem that has gone on for a couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Wayne?
As I spoke a little while ago concerning the Hapfields and the McCoys, that's basically what we have. And I think it all started when the school board got legis, the legislators to get a law put in place that a representative from the commissioners would no longer serve on the Board of Education. I think that is still an open wound and is causing still a lot of problems. All three commissioners are my personal friends. I sit down with them a lot and talk. But in my situation, I'm like one voice on the school board and there's always voting and I'm most of the time in the minority. And it's hard to get things passed through that, or shared with me with the commissioners or I try to share. There's just a problem with working together. And I'm hoping if elected, that somehow this upcoming school board will come up with some answers to have a better working relationship with the commissioners so that we're all in this together. And it's for the education of my grandchildren, all my friends' kids, grandparents, every kid in this county is my kid, as I feel serving on the school board. And that is our number one concern, that we need to be working for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Deb?
The fact of the matter is that come November, possibly four of the five faces in the Board of Education will be new faces. And the same frankly is true on the county commissioner's side. So, whether there are longstanding disagreements, whatever, hands have to be extended from both sides. So, I would, if I were elected, do my part to, to extend that because knowing that we're all basically with the same purpose, you know, it would be easy to collaborate, that that's, I believe, one of the strengths that I have is bringing people to the table. And I would hope that that would happen from the other side also. The, the beauty of a small town is everybody knows everybody. The downside of a small town is people hold grudges and people know everybody. So, I think that has actually hurt the relationship over the years. So, hopefully that will improve. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Nick?
You know, I, I sat on the board at the time that the ex officio member was actually removed. And if I recall correctly, that was more of a collaborative thing between the board and the county commissioners because it just wasn't working the way it should have. And it wasn't that the board said, yes, we want them gone because personally, I was one of the first few that said- one of the first few that said, we need to have that open communication, have someone sitting there. But I think overall, it became one of those issues where, yes, we're better separated. Now, that also becomes, okay, the county has their agenda, we have our agenda. When they don't match up, it all usually hinges on money. You know, one of the biggest things was, we were funded at maintenance of effort. That is a blow to a school system, because you're used to running at a certain level. You're used to having certain programs and everything going on. And whenever you get funded at a minimum level, it all shuts down and you have to scramble and do things. And, you know, that's a lot of times, even in a marriage or in a brother-sister relationship or a family relationship, it hinges on money. And I think that's where our biggest issue is and our biggest problem is with the county commissioners, because we're asking for more and more and more, and they're saying, you're getting what you're getting, what you're getting. So I think we're on a new horizon here. You know, I'm hoping I come back in November, but I'm also hoping that whoever is on the Board can work with whoever's on the county commissioner Board, have a collaboration a little bit more. And I too know all three of the county commissioners, talk to them, speak with them on a regular basis. It's not that we dislike them on the Board, it's just that we all have different ideas of what we need to do, and it comes down truly to money. So I don't know how to solve that either, but, you know, it is going to take a collaboration and it's going to take extending that hand like Ms. Frank said. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Snick?
I don't know whether, if I was elected to the Board, that I can change the past any and what's been said, or what's been in writing, or what's been in books or whatever. But hopefully I can do something in the future. The future is the only thing that I can possibly change. Communications and I'm going to use funding. Money has just got me baffled tonight with money. But the funding part is, is that it only comes about with all circumstances involved. And by that, I mean taxes coming in, people paying their taxes, you know, people spending money in the county, this, this, and this. I don't think that one person, two persons can change the whole world or the change the Allegheny County school system. Running for this, I've decided for one reason, one reason, I've always had success with the commissioners and with the Board of Education when it came from my aspects, with working at the Career Center, the after-school programs and things of that. I don't know all the incidentals, and I'm going to tell you right up front, I don't know all the incidentals on every little thing. But I've always had the opportunity and the success to work together just to prove that we can get things going to make these kids a lot more employable and a lot more educated before they get out of high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Snick. Rayelle?
And I'm going to be completely honest and say, I was not, prior to this evening, familiar with animosities between the county commissioners and the Board of Education. And while that might sound like, then why are you running? Like, why aren't you up to date with everything? I think it's impossible to know absolutely everything, and I think we should always, always be learning. And an advantage to being an outsider in a situation like that reminds me of being in the position of being a therapist and a couple coming in for therapy, maybe looking towards divorce, and you've got some kids in the middle who are being hurt by that. And it usually comes with the ideas of some, maybe some bruised ego and pride and power struggles. And it's all about, again, working on that collaboration, that communication, hearing what both sides are, trying, and listening for and trying to reach that common ground. Because I'm positive both sides would like to see what's in the best interest of the kids. So if I could be a voice that can help that along, whether it be new faces or old, that is my perspective on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rayelle. Our final question before closing remarks goes to Wayne first. Are our students college and career ready? Why or why not?
From what I have been able to see with talking with a lot of teachers, talking to students, I feel that we are putting everything out there that we possibly can to make our students ready for college or ready to go into the job force with connections with the Career Center. And by the way, we've got one of the greatest Career Centers in the state. And the principal does a great job out there, and the staff does a great job. It takes money. That's the whole issue, that everything, every question relates to money. And to have these extra programs, they cost money. But we have to be thinking of all the students from A to Z. Some of them want to go to college, some of them want to go military, some of them want to go into labor force and on down the line. And from what I was able to see in those four years that I was subbing, and I made sure that I went to all four high schools, well, and the Career Center being a high school, I can honestly say that what money we are putting into education, we are getting a pretty good return. But there again, money is the source of all evils. And somehow, some way, we have to be working with better partnerships with the state, with the county, and trying to get money into the programs that we need to have to make our students successful in this century. Bingo.
Thank you, Wayne. Sorry.
Thank you, Wayne. I think the short answer is yes, with a couple caveats. I've taught in a career education program for 30-plus years. So the students who come to me have come through high school, and interestingly, probably half of my students come from the eastern part of the state, with parents wanting their children to get out of the cities. They find this location charming and a safer environment for their children. So my students come to me with, you know, having graduated college, or high school, rather, and they take a balance of career education courses, and they take general education courses that are required of all college students. So on the career side, I think, and I walk away with Mr. Foot said, we have an exceptional Career Center. I wish I could promote that more, because I think there are so many wonderful training opportunities for people who choose not to, for whatever reason, go to college beyond the high school level. So I work with students who are trying to learn a career, but also taking the academic courses as well. So on that side, I see students struggle, and it's not just students from our county. I see students struggle consistently with math and English. And every college person will tell you that. When we get, the majority of our students needing developmental math or developmental English, I think nationwide, we need to rethink what's expected of students in college and what level of math. So I think we're career-ready, I think we're college-ready, but I think we should never be satisfied with where we are. If we say yes to those, then we stop moving forward, and I would never be that kind of Board member. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Nick?
You know, the other night, I had the privilege of sitting in on the achievement banquet, and that's the top 10% of all of the students in Allegheny County. And it's amazing, actually, how many are in that top 10. I mean, kids just kept coming through. I think there was 66 students that represented the three high schools and the Career Center. And it was amazing to hear their statistics and all of the kids that were coming out with the AP credits and coming out with the college credits. So to answer that, yes. Our schools and our teachers, who are the best in the nation, as far as I'm concerned, are every day putting these kids to where they need to be. They're teaching them what they need to know. And the ones that, you know, may need help, they're getting that help, okay? Our teachers are getting them ready. The statistics are showing. Also, when you go back to the park assessments and the different standardized tests, everybody hates those. I understand that. Unfortunately, it's one of those necessary evils, but even those scores are coming up. You can look at the statistics on that, and you can see that those scores are rising, which is a huge plus for the students there. I have to echo what Deb and Wayne have said in the fact that the Career Center is our hidden gem. I mean, it is amazing, the programs that go on out there, it is amazing what you can see them doing. And they are having kids come out, and they're getting right into the job force because they are 100% ready. So our teachers, kudos. Our students, kudos. They are college and career-ready. There's always going to be those students that may have some holdups, but they're going to succeed as well, because I truly believe, coming from ACPS, they are getting the foundation, and they're going to move right into where they need to be. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Snick?
Once you graduate, and if you get a scholarship to a college or you go into an apprenticeship, I think the proof is right there. I think that the teachers, the skill areas, and those that are given the utmost to make sure that the kids are trying to be successful. I think for a while there, we had times where if you weren't going to college, you were not going probably to amount to a whole lot. In regards to the Career Center, we've given these students an awareness program that you can be very successful, you can raise your family, you can pay your bills, and you can attend school and do quite well. I think that has been shared and has been understood by those going to the Career Center as those going to the home schools. The thing that I think can always be adjusted and can always be brought up is the thing that I always called it, it's ask. Attitude, skill, and knowledge, it never ends. And from the time you start until the time you end, no matter what you may be doing, that is a prevalent thing. To have a good attitude, know your skill, and take the knowledge that's being offered to you. So with that being said, I think that we're doing a great job. In fact, the Career Center was the first one in the country to have union apprenticeships under their belt in 2000. And I kudos to the Board of Ed then and to those people that had that come true. So thank you all.
Thank you, Snick. Rayelle?
When I think of college and career readiness, and I think of Allegheny County, I don't really see any gaps that I would say are coming from any part of failure on our school system or wonderful educators. I think that when there are issues, which I have seen, I think there's more of a culture at large. I don't think we pay enough attention to the fact of how, exactly how rapidly technology has rocked our world. It's a very different place entering the workplace. I graduated high school in 1998, and that was before the internet took over and everyone had a computer in their pocket. And that has resulted in a vast change in the career opportunities that are available. Multiple industries have been all but wiped out, and at the same time, maybe the jobs my children are going to have have yet to be created. And so I can see why that makes some nervousness for some people that are seniors in high school, is am I going to go to college? Is this still going to be there? Because they've seen their parents have economic loss. And so I think it's, it's more of a culture shift in us adjusting, because we're not robots as much as we try to keep up with everything. And just keeping up with the adaptation as society changes and as, I put that more on the parents and the understanding that things have changed and what worked for you may not be successful for your kid due to the change in times and they're their own person.
Thank you, Rayelle. Bob?
I guess the quick answer to that is yes, I think they are. And I think if you attend the graduations at the high schools and the Career Center and find out where these kids are getting scholarships and where they're going to school and everything the good that's happening with the kids coming out of the Allegheny County public school system, I think the answer to that is yes. I've been very fortunate in my life. I spent 28 years with the state police, and I had a good career there where I got to do a lot of different things. And then I was again blessed when I left the state police and was asked to write a program and get it through MSDE at the Career Center. And then I got to teach that program for four or five years. And I got to do the articulation agreements and work with Allegheny College and Potomac State College and some of the other universities and talk to some of the folks as to what's going on. And I think that the Allegheny County school system, the teachers and the employees of the school system are doing a great job getting these kids ready to progress in their life. And that's from the Career Center through the high schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. We will move into closing remarks. You have up to two minutes to address any closing remarks you have as well, and they will start with Deb.
Thank you very much. First of all, thank you, Stu, the Chamber of Commerce for hosting, WFWM for recording, Allegheny College for filming. This is a first-time experience for me, having a forum like this. And of course, there will be things that I remember two weeks from now that I should have said. So I would like to reach out to people and ask that you send me questions, comments, concerns. I believe all of us have probably Facebook pages and websites, and I would encourage that. I have not taught for 30-plus years, because I don't like teaching. I have a passion for education, a passion for learning, for teaching. That's why I chose to run for the school board. I have been involved in education for so long, and I see that I could contribute some ideas and some thoughts from the post-secondary level. If you would ask people that work with me what strengths I have that I could bring to the Board, I think I'm a good listener, I'm a good negotiator, I am direct, I'm non-judgmental, and I am always learning, and that's something I work with my students on. You never stop doing that. And I think being a member of this Board, you're always learning about new policies, procedures, things to consider. So I would ask that everybody go out on June 26th and vote in the primary, and I hope to be a successful candidate in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Nick?
Well, thank you, Stu, Chamber of Commerce, radio station, Allegheny College. It's amazing to be sitting here with amongst these other folks here, and I thank all of you for your insight as well. Maybe if I didn't say something, you did, and it sparked something else. So thank you for that collaboration. You know, through this election, there's 10 individuals that are running for four spots. That's going to be tough to judge who you actually pick when you go into the polls on the 26th of June. What I say is, look at what people are running on. Look at their platform. If they're promising too much stuff, most likely, it's not going to be something that is correct. What I'm saying is, I've got the experience. I was appointed back to the Board because the governor saw something in my experience on that Board when I was there, that he put me back on there. So something was working really well. So give that your thought for the experience factor for Hadley, the integrity for Hadley, because I'm going to stand up for what's right. It may not be what the rest of the Board may consider to be right, but it is what I feel, that God has given me, that I have that right to give and that integrity. And I will always fight for the students and the teachers of the Allegheny County school system, because it comes down to students first and teachers second. Not that they're secondhand, but the students are number one priority. It's their programs, it's their safety. And whenever it comes to these big things, such as the safety, the security of our students, to the redistricting, and to the budget, and all of the planning that goes into that, I've been there, I've done that, I've seen results, and I can continue to make a great impact on this school system. Thank you for your support, and get out there and vote on June 26th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick. Snick?
I want to thank everybody involved in the forums tonight. It's excellent. I'm running for the reason of not to worry about what happened back last month or last week. I'm running because I'm retired, and I've worked with the school system for the past 18 years. I was able to have the time and effort to put in many, many times hours at the Career Center, in the after-school programs, with the history programs at the museum, Chairman of the Education Committee at the Chamber. That is my goal, it's my bag. That's what I like. And I'm running for that reason and that reason only, is to make sure that every child, student gets a fair shake in education or curriculum, in construction, whatever it may be. And that's why I'm running for the Board of Education. And I appreciate your vote in regards to that. And, you know, may God bless everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Snick. Rayelle?
I'd also like to thank everybody involved. This is my first time being a candidate in a forum, and this was a fun experience. I learned so much, it was nice to meet everybody else that's running and everybody that I've met tonight. As I said earlier, I am kind of different and kind of a, someone might say, an outsider to some local politics, but that can be an advantage. I've had some success in my life from being different and doing things the non-traditional way. I got married when I was 17, and I'll celebrate my 20th wedding anniversary this I got married when I was 17 and I'll celebrate my 20th wedding anniversary this summer. Odds were against me. I had two children before I was 20 years old. Teenage moms do not go to grad school statistically speaking, and I got that done. And that was from doing things from the non-traditional way, doing things creatively. And creative in my experience usually means not a lot of, not so much the dollars. It's kind of easy if you have the money, but that, kind of having some struggles and obstacles makes you use ingenuity and creativity. An example, I think of that too, when I think of teachers and I very much support teacher autonomy. And I saw recently, someone was trying to raise money to have different seating choices for her students in her classroom. And I think of that as a, how, of, that's such a great genius thing, like you're giving kids a choice of, do they want to sit on a bouncy ball or in a swivel chair or maybe a standing desk? And it's just a great way of do, just doing something a little different and it gives students the option, like they have a choice. So that's like a, a great example of something I would really support. And I hope to continue to do more, have more success non-traditionally. Probably haven't seen too many Rayelle Davis for Board of Education signs out there because I'm seeking creative measures in that as well. So thank you very much and go out and vote on June 26th.
Thank you, Rayelle. Bob?
As I said, I've, you know, I've had a blessed life so far. I miss my wife immensely and I am running to try to finish the job that she started. I campaigned with her both of her times trying to get on the board and when she did and when she was successful. Her passion was the kids, the employees and that the, that the school system prospered. And I think it's my passion too because her and I went hand in hand. And I know all the employees. I know them from working with them in the schools. I, you know, I was in and out of every school in this county numerous times, installing security programs, dealing with issues that came up. And I know that the teachers that talk to me and where they're at right now. And I think that the morale in the school system is kind of low. And I think when morale is low, then the teachers don't do as good a job as they absolutely could do because they lose a little bit of the passion. And I think that's true of anybody. Not to say that we don't have good teachers because I believe they're the best that, that any place could have. They just need the ability to do what they're trained to do and we need to let them, you know, teach like they're, like they were taught to do. And be happy in their jobs and be satisfied that what they're doing is really making a difference in kids' lives. And I believe that. And I'm running to, to make the schools safer and to make the, the kids and the county and the communities prosper. And I thank everybody for their help and this is my first time down this road too.
Thank you, Bob. Wayne?
My God, you save the best for the last. The oldest whippersnapper sitting up here. And I found out that Mrs. Davis here is married to one of my top 10 art students that I had back teaching at Fort Hill. I have enough notes here that I could talk until the cows come home. I was persuaded to run the first time because people said, Wayne, you were a teacher. You know education. Yes, 42 years I was there. I was elected and one of my promises was that I'd have town hall meetings and I've had them. And I will continue to have them. My telephone number is listed in the directory. None of the other board members have their telephone numbers listed. Lines of communication, that's been Wayne and I will continue to do that. I am representing teachers. They're my blood. I was a teacher. Sometimes you get trampled on and the people at the top don't know what's going on in the trenches. Morale is a big issue. Laura Lee and I were instrumental in getting a survey done among certified and non-certified teachers and et cetera in the county. We had a return of around 71 or 74%. And the big concern was morale. I'm working for the teachers. I'm working for the cafeteria workers, the custodians, the maintenance people. I want to thank the partnership of everyone in this room that made this possible tonight. I think it's a great thing. I'm representing you, the taxpayer of Allegheny County. I want to be transparent and in closing, God bless you all. And I am working for all my grandchildren, not just Ashlyn, Garrett and Jaden, but all of them in Allegheny County. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, that concludes our forum. I would like to, special thanks to John Bone from Allegheny College of Maryland, Chuck Dickens from WFWM at Folsburg State University, and Jeremy Irons who didn't get into the picture. We'll have to turn that camera around in a minute. Our Legislative Committee Chair at the Chamber of Commerce. They are all a pleasure to work with and excellent community partners. Thank you all. Finally, I'd like to thank our candidates for their participation and wish them all the best of luck. The primary election will be held on Tuesday, June 26th. The Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce encourages everyone to vote and to make informed decisions on Election Day. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.